Number nine. Or eight, approve the twenty twenty six budget allocation for compensation for elected officials and volunteer. Paid on call staff. I'm looking for a motion to support the requested twenty twenty six budget allocation. For elected officials, volunteer. Paid on call firefighters. As presented with the understanding that elected official pay will increase. For the mayor to eighteen thousand annually, all their persons sixty five hundred dollars being with the newly sworn officials. Seated the April twenty twenty six reorganization meeting. And completing when newly sworn officer seated at the April twenty twenty seven reorganization meeting. All other proposed increase which would be firefighters, EMRs would be implemented at the adopted twenty twenty six budget on January one. Twenty twenty six. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Severs is there second, seconded by Coons. Any questions, discussions, comments? And Pete, this is your chance to break it off.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I I am. The the first comment, I guess I'm surprised that this came up. It was just two years ago. That the same issue came up and. I specifically asked the mayor. At that time when he was making ten, if he would be. Content at twelve thousand. And he responded, yes. So moving forward, then I looked at as as we did get some comparables, and I think staff for that. But a few of them that we did not get that I don't remember seeing at least. Is is Horicon for a little over forty five hundred, Mavel at seventy two hundred. And Ripon at seven thousand. Uh, and Beverden is twice the population. We know they got at least twice more going on. At for twenty thousand to pay the mayor. Uh. If. The aldermen feel that they're not getting enough. I will look, ask them to be referred to the city of Bonalak that gets five thousand dollars a year.
And they're like the city won't.
Yes. And. You know, with Wapah, we have released the data I could obtain was eleven thousand and thirty nine with inmates. I guess what also concerns me is the poverty rate in two thousand and twenty two was ten point two percent. For the city of Wapah. Up in one year increase of over fourteen and a half percent. For two thousand and twenty four, the poverty rate of thirteen point seven two. Which is up three quarters of a pres- a percentage over twenty three. I I guess. With some of the contacts that I received, I I want to close in this one quotable statement made. Uh, to me is if the mayor or council member is unhappy with the current pay scale, get out. Nobody forced you to take these positions. Thank you.
You're welcome. I have a motion by Alderman Severs.
I got stuff to say too. Alright, okay. So. Without even addressing the money aspect, and I brought this up last time. I think this is completely wrong. To make a motion. In one meeting here where there's the public's not even allowed to speak. The public has not been given. A proposal. To let us know their opinions. Now, I understand as elected officials, we're here to represent. Uh, our constituents so that we don't have to grind to a halt talking to them all the time. But this is a completely different thing when we're voting to give ourselves a raise. Among other things in here. You know, I had. Uh, one person reach out to me today who is a very well informed constituent most of the time. And that person had no idea about the eighteen. Thousand where it's at. Now they were still thinking it was twenty four. So. If we're gonna sit here and talk about. A proposal. And things that are going to go into effect next year. There's absolutely no rush. To do this tonight, and I'm willing to have that discussion on numbers. So that we can put something to the public and we can hear from our constituents about giving ourselves raises. But if we're here to follow a motion that was already made. To just bless this and go right ahead with no public input whatsoever. On any sort of proposed plan, then. I'm just, it's a, it's a no for me, and there's no discussion on. For me coming from any of the money.
Well, if it makes you feel better, I had fifty seniors at my meeting today, and they all seemed supportive.
And and every person that I've talked to in my. That has contacted me in my district that said no, but I again, and I said this at the last meeting, it's it's. I'm not even gonna sit here and say I'm against a certain amount of money. Uh, at eighteen, I'm against this process of pushing it through right now, rush rushing it through. When we're talking better than a calendar year. For the elected officials part that this is going to take place and at least eight months for the other parts of it. We can put a proposal together, we can make it known, and we can hear from our constituents.
Well, I haven't kept it a secret. It's been in multiple mail roll columns. I've been on the radio twice.
Exactly.
And with all respect, it took you a year to raise the age limit on riding your bike on the sidewalk. You guys can't do anything fast.
And that's a load of crap.
No, it takes you forever to make.
So, alright, whatever. That's my stance on it. Putting it on Facebook in your mayor column is not letting the public know.
Well, Jayden did an article.
This is a, this is a, this is a meeting where you get the minutes.
Yes.
Facebook is not.
I'm tired of people telling me, I was in Minnesota two weeks ago to dance.
I don't give a shit.
No, shut up. I'm running the meeting. You stop. I'm running the meeting.
Oh, please, please, please.
I was in Minnesota two weeks ago minding my own business.
We don't want to inform the public. Let's go, let's inform the Minnesota public.
No, my argument is this, I'm in Minnesota two weeks ago, and I get tagged on some posts on WhatsApp Wapah. That I'm keeping stuff a secret. I'm the most open person there is in the world. Jayden comes to the meetings, he writes articles. I write a column every week. I go on multiple radio stations every week. I go to the senior center once a month and talk in front of anybody who shows up. I. I'm sorry I got upset.
Those are all good things.
But I've reached the point, I don't know what to do anymore when people jump on me. This morning at the department heads meeting, Kathy laid out a plan to have me to 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 get the word out better. What more can we do? I'm doing everything I can. I don't hide anything. I'm not upset at you.
It's not in the meeting minutes, is all I'm saying. All those things that you do are great. All those things that. You put out there are wonderful and getting more information out there is perfect. But I don't understand what the rush is. To approve something at a council meeting where the public can't even come and give any sort of. Concept or opinion on it, and they don't even know. Right? That we didn't even get the comparables for other cities until I checked my email at one o'clock. It came in at twelve forty. So it's about four hours before the meeting. Right? Where's your list of things that we asked you to bring to us? Right? That's not here either. And that was your, your ask, and we don't have it. If you got it and came up with this, you know, this, right? So.
I have some thoughts on it.
But again, I. I don't even need that, but there's no need to rush this through. Give me the reason why it has to happen now, and we can't let the public tell us.
It doesn't have to happen now. You can, you can wait a year and a half and approve it if you want.
I'm asking for a month or two weeks.
Okay.
I mean, we can still even have it before the next election and still hear from our constituents.
My take on it is like Rana said before, nobody comes to city budget. Who shows up from the city? Citizens and wonder where this budget money is going. Nobody. In the two years that I've been on, nobody showed up to that meeting. And that is just as important, or if not more than this. So just because we in the fight, the public to talk, where will we get anywhere? Hard to say. We may not get anybody.
We won't get anywhere.
We don't have to say to crank about every thing.
Yeah, I mean, you have more turnout for chickens than you do for a city budget.
That's true, but if you don't give them the option, there's definitely nothing.
Yeah, I had one constituent reach out to me before today's meeting, and they just wanted to make sure that the mayor. Specifically was not getting anything more than what is comparable in the state, which I think is fair. Um, and they made it very clear that they wanted to see our emergency staff taken care of first preferably. Um. Personally, I. I don't think that there's not enough money in the world to really thank. Public officials, at least at this level, for what they do, because we do receive a lot of phone calls. We get a lot of headaches. We get a lot of. Complaining. Um, so. While I am in favor of an increase, uh, I do agree with Jason that, I mean, we had a lot of people. Answer that chicken survey. Do we do another survey? I mean, if we have a little bit of time, uh, especially if we can post all the information like this is what. So I understand you have numbers from other communities. Are they sitting in their meetings right now having the same conversation we are? Like, just because that's their numbers now doesn't mean they're not gonna turn around in twenty twenty six and increase everybody by seventy five percent or whatever it is.
The mistake we made all along is it doesn't happen automatic. Because nobody wants to be in the position I am and push it for the pay raise because you look like a jerk.
Right.
Right? But the reality is, if you want people to serve in these positions, I was on the radio last year. On election night and Greg Stenson asked me, why are all the races unopposed? I'm like, well, these jobs are thankless. You get beat up and you pay them like garbage. And like I said two weeks ago at the meeting, that was in the paper and reported on by Jayden. I said, we all walk around and we talk about these things, how local government is the most important form of government because it's where we have the most impact on the people. So why do we treat local elected officials so poorly? And I'll reiterate, because it keeps getting personal, it's not my pay raise, it's the next mayor's pay raise. I don't get it.
No, I did reiterate that too, that it's not going effective in tomorrow, that it's going in fact.
And I know from having this job and the two people who've had it before me, it's not, it's not a part time job. It's a halftime job. There's weeks where it's twenty and thirty hours. And I, I mean, you're right, I could just quit doing things and phone it in. Because if all pays the same, and no one's gonna run for it, because who wants it? I'm trying to entice people to want to do it. I'm just trying to take people, care of people who have the positions. And Jason, my frustration, because I like you personally, as you know, and I'm sorry I got mad at you. I'm Irish.
I apologize also.
That's fair, and I, and I should have been better than that because I have this position. It's not that you can disagree with me. I'm actually very respectful with that. It's this notion of not telling the public. And I probably vented on the wrong person at the wrong time, but I've just had it with this whole not, I don't know what else to do. I'm going on the radio. I go on TV. I go on social media. I try to tell the public everything. I have nothing to hide. Angie publishes the meetings. We have the website. People can tune in online. So when people go on Facebook and they're like, the mayor's trying to ban books. No, I'm not. And I'm not trying to sneak through a pay raise. I haven't kept it a secret. I ran for office on it twice now. And my, my point is, is. We, we can sit there. You want to punt it a month, I find, but like, we could punt everything a month.
Right, well, and my point is not that. It, it's unknown that this is a topic, right? I think that when we come up with an actual number to put out there, that that's what we need to give time. That this is the actual approach of, you know, approach. This is the actual proposed. Right? There's been multiple different numbers that have been put out there.
Yeah, as far as I think, twenty four thousand until I got here.
That's, that's the only part that I want to give people time to voice their opinion on is what the actual number is.
Because I think the mayor should get paid twenty four thousand dollars, but then we got the, I believe that firefighters felt left out.
Mm-hmm.
That was not my intention.
Mm-hmm.
And it was never my intention when I was pushing to give volunteers a pay raise to leave anyone out or act like someone was missed. We did, we did give firefighters a pay raise two budgets ago, and we did elected officials in the last one, and I thought this time we should do the elected officials. That's all at once. Not trying to blow up the budget or screw anything up. I just think that people who have these elected positions work hard, and I didn't think it was that big of a deal. It's six thousand dollars to give the mayor a pay raise in three years. You just spent fifteen thousand dollars on a house and study that you already know what's gonna say it, like. I. I mean, seriously, like, why is the mayor's pay raise the one that gets people? It's the cheapest thing you're gonna spend money on all year. I mean, it is. The squad car got totaled. The deductible was probably more than what I'm asking for a pay raise. And yet this is the one we debate. Like, Jesus Christ, guys, the poor mayor of the city works really hard and puts in a lot of time. And like I said, it almost killed Kyle. And you can, you knew Jody well in the hour she was putting in the stress it took on her. Julie got out of this office, got off of Facebook for six months, lost a ton of weight, looked great. I'm just saying, it's stressful and it's hard. And eighteen thousand dollars a year for a part time job. It's part time. And it is twenty four seven. Jason, at the last meeting, you had an idea that I kind of liked, but the more I thought about it, I didn't. Of give the mayor a city phone that you can turn off, but how do I turn it off? BJ Dama was texting me at twelve oh four in the morning to tell me the all clear on the gas leak, like. I have two people on my phone where it's not silenced, my wife and Kathy Schneevey. Like Kathy calls me at weird times of, like, I can't control when a train's gonna derail, you know?
No, but the, the point of that is when it's an emergency, the department head can call your personal.
And that's fair, but I, I can't control it when things happen or. The night that the police officer had the gun pulled on him, Jenny and I were in Costco. We threw the stuff in the, and I flew home as legally fast kind of. As I could, because I was worried about our people. And like, this goes back to that mayor's column I wrote about a month ago on the parking ticket thing, when the guy just lit me up on the phone, like. With the, the stuff I lose sleep over and the stuff I show up on is when the police officer throws through the ice at the mill pond. I didn't want to lose anyone who works for the city. So I show up for that, or. When Jackson had the gun pulled on him, I showed up at that, I talked to the sheriff of Dodge County at ten thirty at night. I'm worried about the people who work for the city. What do people call and yell at me about a twenty dollar parking ticket? Like, people just need to. Look at, and I do it too, and I get too upset about stupid little things, but I'm just saying. When I go to the schools, and I'm way off topic, but I can, America. When I go to the schools, the kids ask me, what's the most surprising part of your job? And the answer is. The stuff that the voters care about versus what I lose sleep over are two different things. Voters care about the street being solid, park, where they're gonna park their car when it snows, what the parking regulations are. You had it this week with the tattoo parlor guy. I lose sleep over, how are we gonna make the budget balance? How are we gonna take care of our city employees? Making sure my police officers have what they need. Keeping the fire department happy because they're volunteers, and we just can't tell them what to do, but. Sometimes we have to tell them what to do, but I want them to know I care about them deeply, like, these are the things and the stresses that I have. And whoever takes over from me deserves to pay a hell of a lot more money than I am, and you can vote it down. And the other thing is, Jason, I'm the elected citywide official. If you approve it tonight, I'll walk out on that and I'll own it. And they can, you, you or Pete can run for mayor, and you can have the job, and you can donate six thousand dollars back. There's nothing stopping you guys from doing that. I just don't think you would, because once you do this, you'll see what it takes.
No, and I understand, and like I said, I'm not. Even to the point where we're debating. The money aspect of it. You know, my thing is, is we're voting to give ourselves a raise. I feel that that needs to be proposed to the public or. Made known and give them time to give feedback. You know, as far as the budget goes, you know, that, that is a whole nother. You know, conversation with just our increases in this room. You know, we're talking thirty three percent of what we were able to even raise taxes last year. Right? So it, it's no small thing. To, to give this raise, because what we, you know, we were able to raise the levy, I think, twenty nine thousand dollars last year.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, and this is nine thousand six hundred, that's. Thirty, thirty three percent or something like that of. Of the tax increase that we probably can even do next year, so. It, there's gotta be a cut somewhere else to, to compensate that, so, but that's a whole different topic than, than the point I was bringing up. Alright, I'm willing to have that discussion, and, and we think we need to. But it's a waste of time. If there's a motion that already goes through, right? It's. My. Again, my point right now is. That I feel that I need to hear from my constituents if I give myself a raise, and I need to give them a chance to tell me.
I just wanna say.
Yes or no?
Because Mike had brought this to my attention earlier, so, and again, it was. Information I received. So all their persons are raised five hundred dollars, but now they hadn't seen a raise since twenty ten. Is that correct?
I think so.
So, you know, we're talking fifteenish years roughly, you know, it's.
When we did the mayor raise from ten to twelve, Jason, you made the point of it, which is for inflation, it was an eighteen thousand dollars. It's two more years has gone by.
Right.
Yeah.
So I also made the point that. You know, this is not a cost of living job. It's not a living. This is. You know, a voluntary thing, you know, if it was a full time job, then cost of living applies, in my opinion, and. You know, these types of things that are above and beyond are other jobs and, and where we, wherever we are in life. With between working or retirement. Right? That's where the cost of living increase in my mind. Kinda gets bypassed on this, and I look at like our raise, Bobby, it hasn't happened since two thousand and ten. Um, and I've been here probably. It's, it's probably eight years or something like that going on now, but I don't do anymore or any less than what I did when I was.
Right.
Uh, elected back then, you know, and, and I'm personally not in favor of. Of getting more money just because of inflation purposes when I don't do anything more than I did when I got the same money. You know, eight years ago. That, a- again, that's just me.
Well, it's a fair argument, but aldermen aren't mayor. You can be in the city council, and it doesn't affect your job at all. You can't have this job and you say that. You have to have something either very flexible, take a financial hit personally, because you're willing to do it, which is the boat I'm in, or be retired. Julie did the take of the financial hit. She got herself, or she could be the mayor, and then when she was done, she had to go get a job. It's, it's a twenty to thirty hour job hour week, so. You can pay the mayor a dollar a year or eighteen thousand dollars a year. I just think so that they're not like. Going broke doing it would be nice. Yes, ma'am.
The. Club that I volunteer for, maybe this is a way that we could make everybody happy, is when we allow somebody into our membership, they have to be published in our. Regular publication for thirty days before the board votes on it, so that people can submit complaints or. Letters of recommendation or what have you. Is this something that the proposal gets? Blasted to everyone. It's in the minutes. It's on Facebook. It's in the paper. This is what we're gonna be voting on on April whatever. We give people thirty days to submit something, and then that just means that we did everything we could. We tried to inform everyone exactly what the numbers are. When it goes into effect, you have thirty days to make a comment to your alderman, and then we vote on it. Because I personally, I, I would want to abstain from this vote just because we know that I'm, this is the end of my term.
Well, when did I bring this up? February council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So you've had thirty eight days.
I know we have, but the numbers that are in.
No, but it was in this article, and I've actually lowered the budget.
I read the article, but I'm saying that when I came to this meeting today, I thought your raise was just twenty four thousand, not eighteen thousand. So what I'm saying is, let's publish the numbers. Give it another month and then vote on it, because if I didn't know we were changing the number until. Six forty eight today, that means the rest of the public didn't know we were changing the number either.
Well, that's why it was in the mayor's column on Saturday.
I. I'm just saying that maybe if we give it another thirty days, everyone's happy.
And the total budget number is the same.
Mm-hmm.
We lowered the mayor one, to the fire department thing.
And I'm very happy that the fire department was added. I, but that's, that's my only point, is maybe we can make everybody happy. We, you still get. The numbers that you're, well, we can try.
Getting everybody happy. Trying to figure out what that looks like. So, uh, make, make just a couple comments. Thank you for your, thank you everybody for taking comments, actually. Um, so I have a, I'm wired a little bit with it, so. I, I have a, I come from a business background, so the, the public discussion of wages for executive level. Would not be in the public, so I'm very comfortable with the process and that, but I appreciate Jason, your, your input and your thought there. So I would propose to just simply table it for till the council meeting. Which gives the public opportunity to, uh, hear and speak if they choose to. It'll be in the minutes. And, and we can vote on it that night. That would be my proposal. So we're moving it two weeks or, or whatever. To your point, there's no urgency. Let's give the public that, that input. That's what I'm proposing. The, the survey piece on that, again, I don't think it's a big enough dollar amount to. On, on the, when we talk about the council and the.
Yeah, we're not buying a truck.
Yeah, right, so. Um, that piece. I do want to say we, we did step back and we, we worked on, and I want to thank the mayor and Kathy for their work. And Casey for your work on this. Um, so, so we asked a few questions. And we. Put this together. The reality is, try to look at all the positions, including election workers, all the positions that aren't annually adjusted. And if you look at the percents of adjustment, they're, they're fairly. Consistent. The mayor piece is probably the one unique that's a little bit different. No, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But I, I want to just take a minute and thank all the people that are in those positions. Including the, the council members. Um, first, some of the council members have been here a very long time, and that, that knowledge is, is very much appreciated, so. I, I can't say I'm a newbie, because I've been here now term and a half, but. For the first six months, I used the newbie quite a bit, but I've learned.
I'm still using it.
I've learned so much from, from knowledge and wisdom, guys, and I appreciate, appreciate this team. Um. To the mayor role, and I don't look at this as. So we're trying to allocate some, some budget, um, pieces. We're also, uh. Going, going to go through some potential change with the fire. Group, so we felt, we all felt fire was a critical piece along with the EMR piece of this, so. Specific to the mayor role. Um. So Jason, I did challenge for some expectations. And, and I have had some, uh, discussion with the mayor on some expectations. One of the, one of the things, and, and so I want to take, I just want to take Ron out of the role for a minute and talk about the role, right? So. It is a frontline role. And it does take a lot of, of, uh, input from the public, wanted or unwanted. It. The, the other part of the role that my expectation or my hope in, uh, for future mayors. Would be that they have the lobby connections in the relation, and they build the relationship connections. To the state representatives. I've seen Ron do that. I appreciate that about him on, from the utility side. I also appreciate that about him. Um, because there's been opportunities. And, and moments when we've had our voice heard, and some of those relationships are built. And what, what Ron has helped forge. Utilities benefits from at times, and, and we've been able to make some interrelations with some of the, um. Legislation, so that, that to me is part of the role. And that's done primarily during the day, right? So that's a piece of it. Um. There, there is a lot of day meetings. There is a lot of disruption to, to normal work schedule. I, I kind of can see. With, with Ron, if you're, if you're not a business owner, you're probably gonna have a hard, have a hard time punching in and punching out and then, you know, making all the meetings. You have to think about, seriously think about being in that position, so.
You have to change your clothes a lot.
Your socks specifically.
Now, me, um. I also see that the last two terms, we had no other interested parties. So part of this, the goal was to get to where we do have potentially other interested parties. You made that. And brought that awareness to me.
To get younger people at all, yeah.
To get the next generation, so I think that is a piece, if we can at all do that, either in council roles in the future or in potentially a mayor role, so. That, those are all good things, um. So. I'm fine waiting, if, if we want to wait two weeks. I proposed we just table it and, and bring it to a vote, for a vote tweets, but that gives the public that opportunity for anyone.
And Pete, whoever it was who called you, they're more than welcome to run for the job. They're right. I did sign up for it. I don't deny that, but they can have it too. And they can get all the phone calls and.
Uh, so, hold on, I want to, I want to point out, you signed up for a twelve thousand dollar year position.
I did.
Yeah, and that's what you're currently.
Yeah, that's what I get.
For the duration of your time.
And whoever gets it next gets more, hopefully.
Well, we'll see.
But, um.
Yeah, on, on that note, I, I kind of agree. I'm. Kind of looking at it that this may be my last term, just because my work and everything doesn't cooperate properly, so I don't look at it as I'm. Voting for a pay increase for myself. That's definitely not the way it's going here. But. And hopefully it's some changes at work where I can run. I don't know, but. I'm looking at it at that direction, is let's try and get more people involved. Let's see if we can get more people drawn to the position so they can learn more about the position and participate better.
And then my final point is, like I said once before, complaining is easy, leadership is hard, so it's easy to follow you and say. That no one made the mayor sign up for it, but I didn't see them volunteer to. To do it, and I really want to jump on what Dan's point was, the stuff's during the day. Like, the lobbying efforts are great, and I'm more than willing to do it because I love this city more than just about anything other than family, and so I do do it. But like, who are you gonna get to do it if you don't pay him, like? You know what my city put in units for a day? It's eighty dollars. You probably didn't get off of your chair at the county sheriff's department for eighty dollars. I'm just saying. What did you get paid an hour for?
And, and when. I went to Washington DC and I went out of the county. For, uh, training and other, uh, events that benefited the city, yes, I did get that eighty dollar per diem also, so it, it. It's not like we get nothing. We do get, but I guess I'd ask before you let this go to a vote, is I'd ask Kathy to. What was published for us on the. Potential race for the alderman and what wards it would affect and when that would be, because.
But when I put that together, I was juggling a lot of balls, and I was thinking about this election, so I actually have those flipped. Um, I did correct it, so it was online now, it's correct, but, um. To be clear. To be clear. Districts two, four, and six would be affected in April of twenty twenty-six, and one, three, and five in the paper of twenty twenty-seven.
Thank you.
That's opposite of what I had written on Friday.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
All right, well, despite what everyone said, there is actually a motion on the floor. From Seabers, seconded by Coons. To approve the motion as written. Um, it sounds like you're going to, I just want that down, but that is the motion on the floor, has there any other discussions about that?
Night, may I make a comment?
Yes, you can.
The statute requires three quarters vote of all members of the common council. The statute defines all members of the common council as the mayor and all the alderpersons. So if one, in my opinion, if one person or more were to abstain. You are still going to need five votes, period.
Isn't that just sort of the change of the term?
Oh, I think that, that is for the, that is for the salary also, so I, I, I wanted to say that before you start voting.
I'm glad you did, yeah.
So, again, if there, if, if there is a, uh, you know, a motion to postpone this, that certainly is your prerogative, but I wanted to make that clear, I know it's in Kathy's notes. Kathy and I discussed it before, but I wanted to bring that to your attention before you take a vote. So I would make a motion to postpone it for two weeks, till, till the, whatever the timeline is. I, I say two weeks, but I don't want that. Well, I, 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 I'm hoping that you would have a, a, a friendly amendment from the persons that voted. Uh, again, with the, the first and the second. Um, I, I think technically a motion to table would supersede. Uh, a, a motion on the floor, so you could take a vote on that if you want.
In the same person.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Can Dan ask for the table?
So I made the, I made the original motion, can I make the motion to amend?
Certainly can.
Okay, so I would make a motion to amend and, and postpone the vote until the council. Which would give the community then opportunity for him.
And he would need a second, again, by Bobby to approve the same, that. If you want to.
So if you second it.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
I'll second it.
I don't know if you can. Because it's her, well, she seconded the amendment.
I see, okay.
Bobby Joel holds firm, we vote on the original amendment. All right, well then there's a motion by Alderman Seabers, seconded by Alderman Coons to approve. The recommended motion as is laid out here, we will need to take a roll call on that.
Manashek.
Aye.
Seabers.
Aye.
Who wants?
Aye.
Smarski.
Nay.
Westfall.
Nay.
Ledesma.
Abstain.
We have three ayes, two nays, and one abstain.
You are still free to vote if you wish.
Uh, oh, yay. So we have four ayes, two nays, and one abstain. Is it, we still lose?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm, I'm not good at math, that one I know.
Two fails.
Motion fails. So then we'll move on to number nine.
So like, like, we can make more motions on.
Yeah, yes, certainly can bring.
So, I would make a motion. That we. Publish this, that, you know, and make it known to the public with these exact numbers as presented. And that we bring it back at the next council meeting, where the public, you know, has time to, to vote on, I don't even know if we need a mo- well.
I'll second your motion.
Right, I want that motion to lock in the numbers.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so your motion is to approve everything in two weeks.
Well, to.
To vote.
To vote on it, to vote on it in, in two weeks, and to have these as the set numbers since they've changed. You know, over the last month or two that we've discussed this, that this is our proposal.
Does that make you a yes voter, or is this just a waste of time?
Cause, well, no, it gives me a chance to hear from my constituents if they so choose.
All right.
To, to vote, or to, you know, let me know.
I'll second your motion. There's a motion from Westfall, seconded by Seabers, and I like to say it's dumb that we're spending this much time on one thing. Uh, yeah, we had to roll call that too.
Yeah, I think so. Seabers.
Aye.
Manashek.
Aye.
Westfall.
Aye.
Coons.
Aye.
Ledesma.
Aye.
Kismarski.
Aye.
That motion carries. We'll have the same conversation in two weeks. Number ten, amend the charter ordinances outlined in municipal code one point zero two, changing the mayoral term from two to three years.
So, we are the first step of that, Kathy?
Well, just. You can't just randomly change this, this is actually a change to the charter ordinance. Which state statute defines the terms for mayors and elected or people that's two years. Charter ordinance allows you to have a full role here and define a term other than what the state statute is. And so, where I, what I did was outline the process. This requires a two-thirds vote of its members also, uh, and then a publication of. Sixty days, I can't remember if it was thirty, sixty days, of which then the electorate can appeal. Um, if there's an appeal, then it goes to referendum, or you could have to go to referendum. Um. So, that's just the law. Um, and so, we would need to prepare the charter ordinance, there needs to be a class one application. Um, and then you could take action on it, and then that's sixty day rating period, so. Um, there is a process, and that's the process you would have to follow to make the change as proposed. So, right now, the only thing you could do is direct us to create the ordinance.
It, it, it's not a complicated process, I think Angie has most of the heavy lifting on us. Um, we have a, we have a form for it, we've done a number of them, we've never had one go to referendum, and I'm not saying this wouldn't, you know, be the first, but. I, I, I want you, I would want you to think more about whether this is the decision you wanna make, rather than worrying about it being charter ordinance. If that, if that makes sense.
What is the benefit of going?
So the, the, from my perspective, the benefit is the mayor would happen every other aldermanic. So right now, the mayor, every, um.
Even number year.
Every even number year, the even number districts also are up for election, this would put the mayor's role in a rotation. So that would be even, and then odd, and then even, and then odd.
Okay.
So it, the most likely, uh, I wanna, I wanna say this. Ron came from alderman seat, right, so it gives all the alders the opportunity to, to.
It's easier to run for mayor if you're in an odd-number district, because you're not giving up your seat to do it. So this would alternate it back and forth.
Okay, because I was just looking at that, and I'm like, it doesn't look like, looks like a lot of people gave up after two years, doesn't it?
Well, yeah, and if you look at the bottom of the sign, it was changed nineteen sixty-six from a one-year term to a two-year term.
Okay.
And that's why some of the early, so when they served two or three years early on, it was two or three terms.
Gotcha.
And then, the other thing it does is it gives you a little continuity in government, someone's here for three years instead of two. And I can just say from having done it, like, you get the job and you're here for six months, and it feels like you're already gotta get ready to run again, because it comes right up around the corner, but. Um, those are the reasons why.
Okay.
Um, and most people in town think it's four-year term anyway.
All right, cool, I'm in favor of that then.
All right, well, I need a motion to approve it.
So moved.
All right, I'll go with Ledesma, seconded by Manashek, okay, Mike?
Yep.
All right, need a roll call on that.
Westfall.
Aye.
Smarski.
Aye.
Ledesma.
Aye.
Manashek.
Aye.
Seabers.
Aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously, number eleven, for mayoral correspondence, National Library Week is coming up April sixth.